... puts it right on the porch.
So every Thursday?
No, it's every day.
I used to have that.
For outside of the metropolitan area.
Okay, well, folks, we're on the air and welcome this evening. We have got an easy agenda and we have not a big audience, but at least we've got our local news media here, so, welcome. Okay, would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barry.
Fulton.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Okay, and first on the agenda is communication, and that's accepting resignation from Ray Lusk from the Safety Commission. They had moved out of town.
I'll make a motion, we accept his resignation and send him the letter of thanks for his service to the community.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, next is business from the public. Anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? All right, none tonight, Bill? Yeah, well, thank you for attending.
You want to hear something? Do you have a story?
Sure. No, I think we're fine, but thank you.
A quick story.
Oh, a quick story.
See what happens.
I know it.
No, just remind everybody, next month is the parade for the Veterans Day, November 11th. If the weather's like this, we'll have a big turnout.
Yep.
December 1st is our toy run.
Okay, December 1st.
That will be the second annual event for, unfortunately, former AMO members.
Uh-huh.
But we're expecting a big crowd, too.
Oh, good, good.
And I have flyers, I'm going to bring them down and give them to Marilyn.
Uh-huh, okay. Are you going to have it where it ends up at the Eagles again?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, it'll be at the Eagles for lunch for all the participants.
Okay.
And we're going to invite a number of children down. And any leftover toys, we're talking about expanding our toy run so that any leftover toys, we maybe have another parade, have a few of the motorcyclists convoy with a couple of trucks and go around to some of the different organizations and pass out what we have left over, so.
That's a great event.
It's exciting.
It is, oh, just the kids just love seeing all that pile of toys, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that, Bill, yeah.
And, you know, it's wonderful. Sherri comes down and helps us out, and the looks on the faces of the kids as they're getting the toys, that says it all.
Oh, boy. Yes, I am so excited. They don't care about the food, they just want those toys.
There you go.
Oh, thank you, Bill. Okay, counsel, you got a short consent calendar this evening.
Move it up to the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, okay, so, next is Marilyn, code enforcement report.
I don't have anything to add, really, to what I have written. Hoping to get some restitution on the case on 1899 Gary Place, the big cleanup that we just had done last month.
Is that the one where we spent approximately $1,500?
Yes, sir.
I succeeded in negotiating a plea of guilty by the responsible party and obtained an order of municipal court ordering restitution as an alternative to jail, so we have a restitution order, which is about the best we can get, and it's full restitution for all that was spent.
Good, wonderful.
Great.
Yeah.
Any questions?
And the photos that you sent.
Photos were from Gary Place.
From the Gary Place, yeah. Wow.
Just anecdotally, I emailed Marilyn a link to an issue they've got going on up in the Portland area. We're not unique in the problems here. They had a home that basically was a humongous problem, they cleared it out, and six months later it filled all back up again.
Wow.
And they're going through the same process and running through the same issues of trying to keep it going.
Is that the one where they have the squatters, I mean, the people who don't live there?
Also.
Yeah.
Oh, I think I saw that, too.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and there was an issue even last weekend that, or last week, that Marilyn took care of, and that was somebody periodically, I mean, for many years, people would dump rubbish down off of Oak Creek by Onlochner Road, and so there was quite a big pile, I noticed yesterday, that it was cleared out and got cleaned up.
Thank Mr. Shepherd for that.
Oh, thank you. It looks like somebody dumped a whole household of stuff out there, so, you know, when I drove, I drove by it today, and I thought, I don't know if maybe in our city right-of-way, if maybe we should think about fencing off that little section, it's between the two bridges. So it's pretty hidden down there, and it's, you know, it's pretty dark in that area, but, you know, if you let junk and trash pile up in that area, when it floods, it's just going to go right on down Oak Creek. So, but it's right, right along the, you know, right along the road there is where they end up dumping, you know, a bunch of belongings. It's happened for years, but sometimes it seems like it's more frequent than others, but, yeah. So, but, well, thank you, Mark, for going out and getting that cleaned up, so, thank you. Any questions, Marilyn?
There's a follow-up. I noticed several couches in the right-of-way.
Thank you for mentioning that.
What do we do with the couches?
We have.
I know they don't pick them up.
Well, yes, we do pick them up.
We do?
Public Works has been picking them up recently. I just, just this afternoon had a chat with Kevin Hines from Republic Services. In the past, they have picked up some for us, and we reached an agreement today, again, that they'll, they'll take care of them when we call them. What they do is try to locate the owner. If it's on a multifamily property, they'll bill the property owner. If it's on, if it's adjacent to a private property, single-family home, they check the address to find out if the, if the address has garbage service, and they just tack it onto the bill. He said they have not had any problem collecting on those bills in the past, so they will, all we have to do is call and they'll pick them up. I gave him one on Salem Avenue this afternoon before we hung up.
One I was thinking of.
Yeah, the pink one, over by Maple Lawn, yep.
Did he say what they get for a couch?
What they get for a couch?
Charge.
I don't know what they charge. It's, it's on their website. Their rate, all those rates are on there, listed on their website.
Yeah, well, that's good news. Yeah, thank you, Marilyn, for following up on that. Any other questions, Marilyn? Rich?
What happens if, if it's your place and some lowlife comes along and dumps stuff next to your place, not on your place, but next to your place? And we then call the garbage company, and the garbage company stops by and picks it up, and then builds the guy who's the double victim here? Is that, am I misunderstanding?
It's a civil issue between victim and the garbage company.
Yeah, and I really don't think it's been much of a problem, Rich. I think they're, they try and be careful, and also, you know, there's some judgment involved when.
Well, and the reason they try to be careful is they can't legally collect if it wasn't his garbage.
It's not on the guy's property, it's just.
Right.
Yeah, interesting. Okay, anything else? Okay, well, thank you, Marilyn. Next, business from the council. So, Rich, anything tonight?
I don't think so.
Okay, Ray?
No.
Okay, Floyd?
No, thank you.
Bessie?
I do. I, Monday I talked to Chief Latanzio about this, and it's something that is going to be coming down the pike, but it's, it's medical marijuana dispensaries, and there's an article in the paper earlier, or late last week, I think it was, and it said, part of it says that the Oregon voters rejected the dispensaries in 2010, but legislators passed a bill this year and set in motion a nine-month review process during which the laws implementing the dispensaries would be determined by a committee. And a lot of cities and counties, I heard one today that apparently approved and said there didn't think there was going to be a problem, but a lot of cities are going on the proactive side now and taking care of it, getting laws passed because they don't want them, and they just think there can be problems. But if maybe the chief could tell you how he feels, we talked about it, and I'd, you know, I don't want them either. I think they're going to, you know, cause nothing but problems, and I think we need to think about it now rather than when they finally get here and then we have to think about it. Some cities will say if there's any problems, they'll pull the business license. We don't have a business license in Albany, so we don't have that option, and.
Last week, Bessie, at the WCJC meeting, that you missed that one, it was a big, long discussion, and the chief was there, and it was over this issue. So Representative Andy Olson was there updating it. It was real educational on really seeing what, how it'll impact law enforcement in trying to be able to enforce this. We're actually fortunate to have Representative Andy Olson a part of this new committee that's taking place on reviewing it at the state level, because he comes at it as the law enforcement view, too, so it's good to have him at that table. So they're real kind of divided on the state. What they're looking at is if they come up with legislation over this, they could be able to add a lot of kind of protections to it for law enforcement than what would happen on a citizen initiative measure. I have no idea what, what's right or what's the best when it comes to something like this, you know, I, to me, it's left up to law enforcement, but, but chief, is there anything I'm missing from the conversation? Did you want to mention that we had last week at that meeting?
Mayor, I don't think so. I also talked to Andy Olson a couple days ago, we had breakfast, and we talked about this a little bit, and from his perspective, the way that it was passed, that it would allow that cities wanted to opt out of having them, they could pass something to say they weren't going to allow a dispensary in their community.
Well, what's happening, what I see happening with other cities around the state is most of them are using their business license ordinances, and they're, what they're saying is that they will not issue business licenses to any business that is in violation of federal or state law, and of course, the marijuana laws still are federal. And that's been, I know Medford just recently went through this, and I believe some others have done the same thing. I don't know what, and we haven't researched it because we haven't been asked to, what, how we would be able to do that, because we currently don't require business licenses, and so what we could conceivably, what could happen here is you could have a dispensary open without us even really being aware of it, because we have businesses that come and go all the time, who, because we don't license, we don't know.
I know.
So I think the chief's going to be, because you're still involved with the other, having conversations with the other police chiefs in the region, so, you know, maybe keep us kind of updated on what you're, what you're hearing on that might help, but, but it was kind of educational for me, I noticed, last week when we were at that meeting. I know the police chief for Corvallis has been really, really kind of involved with it also, but, yeah, it was quite the conversation. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, you know, my feeling is, like I said, we need to be proactive if there's anything we can do ordinance-wise, anything like that, I think we need to look into it sooner rather than later.
Question?
Yep, uh-huh. Rich?
If we made an ordinance that said, basically, we're not going to allow anything in Albany that is contrary to federal law, or, you know, wording it such that, is there anything else that would also be caught in that same, I'm not thinking of anything, but that we would also outlaw at the same time?
Unintended consequences.
Right.
I, off the top of my head, I, I'm not aware of anything.
Well, we can allow alcohol again, couldn't we?
You can be a dry city if you wish.
That's not prohibited by federal law.
I don't think.
It could have implications, I suppose, for physicians who prescribe.
We could have a drink and talk about it.
Because it's, that is prohibited by federal law but allowed by state.
Mecha, mecha.
If, if the council would like, I know the city attorney would be happy to research the issue and see what our authority is.
I would like that. I really would.
Well, the other thing you'll have to tell me, if you want to give me that direction, is how risk averse are you? I mean, do you want, we're going to be in a new area, so if you want me to look for a way to prohibit that which the state law is essentially trying to allow, understand that you may spend some money ultimately down the road, and if that's your direction, I'll do my best.
You know, can a city levy a local tax on marijuana?
Hmm.
And you'll have.
I don't believe you can.
Both sides.
Again, that would be something we could check into, I'm not aware of.
And put a, put a 3,000% sales tax on it?
Actually, I'm, you know, Jim, I'm not so sure about that, because cities do have sales tax authority in the state, but I'm not, some of it was preempted, but, but like, for example, Ashland has its restaurant tax, which is a sales tax on a specific service.
But it would be difficult to argue with a straight face, which is usually the standard I use, that this measure is intended to raise revenue.
Why not?
Well, because this discussion makes it pretty clear that the purpose of the measure is not to raise revenue, but it's to prohibit an activity that would otherwise be legal.
Well, it depends, not necessarily.
It could be.
Just tell me what you want.
Knowing about it would be a good thing.
Knowing what options are under the law. And I, and I was being facetious, but Jim, I can certainly assist him in looking at what other cities are doing. The League of Oregon Cities has been publishing pretty regularly what other cities are up to, and we could share, make contact, and, and I, I will be consulting with Jim and Mario on what might be a response.
We have had at least one inquiry that I know of from someone who had been approached by a potential dispensary as a business, a person who owns a property with multiple occupancies in it, and they'd been approached by someone who wanted to open a dispensary in one of their open business storefronts.
Right, I have been called also by one property owner for the downtown wanting what my thoughts were on, if they had rented to somebody, and I also have had a very big advocate, it's probably been about a year, that really wants to be able to get it going in Albany, and, you know, so we, there's, there is some movement out there.
And there are strong feelings on both sides.
On both sides. You think Blue was controversial? Yeah, so, what would the council, would the council like to have staff bring back what, what other cities are doing and what, see what the federal law is, up to state law? Would you want that?
I would, definitely.
Information?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not seeing all nods.
Yes.
And, yeah?
Yeah.
Dick?
Yeah.
Yeah? Bill?
No.
No? Ray? No? So, maybe we should have a vote then and make a motion on that of what you'd like to direct staff to do, since we're not a full.
Okay, then I guess I'll move that we have the city attorney, along with the city manager, look into our options for what we can do regarding medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay.
Okay.
So I have a question, just to clarify, this is a legal business, a legal activity, correct?
No.
Not fair.
Legal, legal in Oregon, not legal, not legal in the United States.
Well, I understand, that, okay, that's fine. They have the same problem in Washington and Colorado, I think, and.
Yeah, and, but realistically, feds have said they're not going to prosecute.
So, so, Bessie, your motion had mentioned to have staff checking the options of what we can do over medical. When I was stating earlier was just to bring back what state law is and what other cities are doing, so are you wanting staff to bring back options of what, what we can do? You want that level?
I mean, yeah, because what other cities are doing is going to give us options, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
I think we, I understand the intent.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I would think we need a roll call.
Olson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Callum?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Kupczynski?
No.
Coburn?
No.
That's four yes, two no.
Okay, got it, all right. Okay, motion carried. Okay, anything else, Bessie?
Nothing.
Okay, Bill?
Nothing, thanks.
All right, Dick?
Yeah, this discussion reminds me of prohibition, and particularly, we had prohibition, and people saw, some people saw, it was kind of a dumb idea, but there were those who fought violently against getting off prohibition, and there were fundamentalist churches and the criminal element. The criminal element was making a pile of money tax-free of illegal booze, and I kind of wonder if maybe these towns in southern Oregon, if that's the reason that they're arguing against dispensaries, that they see Oregon's biggest, at least I've heard, Oregon's biggest cash crop. This way we can keep from having taxes on Oregon's biggest cash crop. I think, I think we need to learn about it, but I think prohibition, it's a dumb idea. It's a dumb idea in the 20s. It's been a dumb idea for a long time on drugs.
Okay, is that it, Dick?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to update you real quickly on the rail meeting. Last week was the community kind of stakeholders meeting out at LBCC, and Counselor Kupczynski and I had attended, along with Ron Irish, also was there, and that was, some of the stakeholder folks were, and Bill Root, Bill was there also, thank you, Bill, for attending that. There was quite a bit of vocalness coming from the Corvallis folks that are on that committee, and there was some of the advocates that came. And then evidently, I guess, Monday at Corvallis' council meeting, they have sort of passed a resolution to support wanting to have the rail come to Corvallis. I've had a conversation with Mayor Manning over our thoughts, and I'm another of their city councilors today, and so next Tuesday is our leadership council meeting. So when I was at the, last week's meeting at LBCC, I was just there to listen, since I was there as the leadership council, I just wanted to hear what people's input was. So next weekend is the new, the alternatives and what the screening criteria shows for the routes, which is still in our favor, having it go up the UP line and not bypass our train station. That will be all brought to the leadership council. From there, I think it's the next week in November, we'll be going out for open houses to the communities, and that's where it'd be great to have our council show up, advocates really making, you know, showing that we're supporting for the rail to come through the UP. But when I look at it with, with Corvallis, I fully understand the folks over there wanting to have rail come, you know, through their community, but I, but looking back, it's like Albany has, for almost 20 years, we have done our, you know, we have planned for a transit station, for a train station, for a multimodal station. That's been 20 years in our city plan, and by funding the amount of infrastructure that we have put in to be able to provide that service for passenger rail. Corvallis doesn't have it in their plan. They don't, they don't have it in their, you know, their CIP or their, you know, any source of funds been designated to move towards that goal. So it's like, we, we saw that as a goal for Albany almost 20 years ago, and we reached that. So, and also, a part of the screening criteria is to make sure that the route is more efficient, you know, to make sure you get the timing so people will want to get on, on the rail and travel through the corridor. It was to not have, it was to have less stops along the route. Well, if, and I, and I told this to the Corvallis folks, that if you add another city to the rail line for a stop, you know, it's going to lengthen the time, but what would be the difference from, say, Hillsborough, or Tigard, or Gresham, Beaverton, any other community around Portland wanting the train to come to their community also? If we meet every community's needs that wants to have a transit, you know, stop in their community, then the whole, the whole rail lines can end up being like a maze, you know, weaving around every community, and then it's not going to reach the goal of having frequent stops. So I understand Corvallis' concern, but I think what needs to be done, and which, you know, we're moving in that direction, is now that we're the MPO, we will be able to continue with our Lynn Benton Loop bus system. In the future, we can be able to have more frequency in that bus system, enhance it more as there's more ridership to come to Albany to get on the passenger rail to head up north or south. So we have those, you know, we have the, those options for, as there's more ridership in the future, is to be able to increase our bus travel, you know, system that we already have to serve, you know, serve the two communities. So, so next week, I think it'll be an important meeting, you know, Counselor Collins and I just had a little conversation before the meeting whether we should have a resolution coming from Albany stating that, no, we want to make sure the rail stays here. The only thing is, is we'd have to bring back the resolution, and it wouldn't be able to be, have action in time before next Tuesday's meeting. But it could be still, you know, for another meeting, or unless it's just you want to give direction that I can relay your voice from Albany City Council at next week's meeting to the leadership council to state you would like to make sure that you are heard, that you want to have, make sure the passenger rail stays in the UP line.
Well, a resolution is really nothing but a motion that's written down in advance, and the other alternative would be someone could articulate a motion, could be passed this evening by the council, the minutes would reflect the adoption of that motion, it would have the same legal impact as a resolution.
Okay. I mean, that could be, you wouldn't be able to see the wording to it.
Yeah, it could be presented as a resolution.
Yes, well, no, it couldn't be presented as a resolution, but it could be presented as this was the vote of a majority of the Albany City Council was, however, the motion was articulated.
Yeah. So that would work if you wanted to do a motion without seeing all the wording to it, you can, you know.
Could we have a motion suggesting that the manager, or that the mayor and staff prepare a resolution containing so-and-so?
Yes, but you wouldn't have that resolution adopted. You'd have to adopt, I mean.
So you think the wording should be expressed now and adopted now rather than?
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to suggest, I'm just saying you have that alternative.
If I could make just a suggestion, because I think I, I believe I know the will of the council on this issue, is just if someone would make a motion directing the mayor to express the city of Albany's support for maintaining rail service to the city of Albany, as a part of the high-speed rail project, that would cover it.
I'd move that we direct the mayor to say their sense of the council is to keep Albany in the forefront of high-speed rail process as is already currently outlined as a preferred alternative in the ODOT planning process.
Okay, that's a motion.
I would like to add that we prefer the use of the UP line and the use of our.
You'll lose a vote if you do that.
Already renovated state. I don't think we want to say that just have the train stop here, because they may go through Corvallis and then back up to Albany and really screw up the whole idea, I think.
So, which is, Ray made the motion.
I'll second raise.
So, you'll second raise then, okay. So, so let me just take, I mean, I, all, what has been, you know, with the alternatives that are out there, looks very favorable to, you know, for us. We probably don't need this, but it's just part of a conversation I can bring up in case next week there is a lot of advocates up there from Corvallis, and if we don't have anybody, you know, on our side up there, I can at least be able to relay, you know, our citizenry, you know, concerns on that. Because what's been taking place. place with the process has worked in our favor. By being able to have that, the goals and strategies and the, the alternatives and the screening criteria has been all in our favor on this. So...
And I would add that I know the mayor, and I know staff, both Ron Irish and myself, and I'm not sure who else has been involved. I think Mark was it. We have, that's the message we've consistently been giving anyway. So, all we're doing is sort of formalizing what has been our practice over the, since this whole project first started. In fact, the mayor and I met with Steve Bryant.
Years back, yeah.
Been a couple of years ago, saying, whatever is done, needs to ensure that we use Albany's current station, and that Albany remains on stop. And, you know, fortunately, common sense has sort of coincided with our interest.
So, that can be part of our message that we're sending?
It's been our message, consistent.
I know. But, messages out of the past have a way of just dissipating into the ether. I think a message needs to be expressed now.
Well, I think Ray's motion gets to it, Dick.
Yeah.
Can I add the...
I think, and mostly because this is a preferred alternative, ever since the whole process has been to try to be able to make it the most cost-effective. And using that UP line is the most cost-effective route. The other route, I don't know, Councilor Kellum, if you're thinking about, was the I-5. That's way too costly that they have found.
Depends how they build it, according to the guy from ODOT today. And that's why, I don't want to say, no, we don't, we won't, don't want to think about that. I, I think we don't want to think about Corvallis, or up the west side, or the numbers of those things. We want it to come through Albany, great, let's have it come through Albany.
Right. The I-5, it looks, it's, that's more of a long-term commuter rail route for I-5. More, this study is more passenger rail. You know, that way, you can be able to get it more efficient through the I-5 corridor, but also from California up to Canada. So, this is more the passenger rail. I've had conversations with the advocates for the I-5 corridor, and they, they're looking at more wanting like a max line, sort of, really running from Portland on down.
According to ODOT today...
Stop at Woodburn and all the little burghers in between, wouldn't it?
Along, it's just so costly, because you're going to, mostly when it comes north of Albany, you're going to have to do a tunnel clear through up to Salem. And if you use the I-5 corridor. So, and also, almost all the interchanges along I-5 would have to be changed. So, that's where it's way too high in cost, and that's the reason that has been on the lower end for the I-5 corridor. So...
It is. It was explained to me that you can run 125 miles an hour there. You can run 80 miles an hour here. And so, the timeframe is, if you want to get there fast, if you want to go from Eugene to Portland in an hour, you can't do that going through...
And, and this NEPA process, yeah, the NEPA process for this study is not your big higher speed rail. This is rapid rail. So, this is up to the 120. So, they're more looking at 100, it's mostly going to be around the 100, 110 at the most. So, so it's not the big higher speed like in Europe, or, you know, east coast. So, this study's only for more of a rapid rail. That's a total different study that would take place. But, yeah. This is just setting, setting Oregon, going through this NEPA process, is setting us the pathway for whenever we can be able to get federal funds to be able to expand the system. And that's how Washington was able to be able to get their funds when it came to stimulus money, because they had already gone through the NEPA process. So, that's where this, we're just getting ourselves paving that path. We don't know when things will take place, but the first step to this process is working with the railroads, you know, trying to be able to get the route more efficient, at least, before we expand it.
You know, I, I think we would be remiss if we didn't have a place at the table and keep saying this is what our opinion is. But I think it'll be several of our lifetimes before we ever see the first thing actually start to happen. But I think we still have to have a place at the table.
Right. And at least with this study, it would be very nice to know where is the route actually to take place, so you can start planning for it, too. But, just like the conversations we had with Steve Bryant, was still trying to find out what his communities want for that route. And there still wasn't anything being set and decided over where that route, because he was with the, that was a solutions team at that point. This is the next level up with this NEPA process. But, okay. So, so I have down the, motion is to, next week, just bring the sent, the council's, you know, sense forward of wanting to be able to make sure that the preferred alternative stays through Albany on our, and doesn't bypass our transit, transit station. Any other discussion?
Attorney?
Okay?
Can I make a statement?
Uh-huh.
As a stakeholder?
Uh-huh. Yes, that's right, Bill. Come on.
If I may.
Yeah.
In the discussion that they had, they gave colors to the different alternatives. The red line is the freeway line. The blue line is pretty much the existing Amtrak line from Eugene, clear through Albany, with some changes. And on, oh, the yellow line is the one that goes through Corvallis. On their paperwork, where they showed the cost-effective compared to the others, the blue line always came out first. Where they showed a circle that big around for the blue line, you almost couldn't see it for the red and the yellow and a purple. So, cost-effective, the blue line, which is pretty much the existing route through Albany. The yellow line, they would have to backtrack into Albany to get back on the tracks. The red line would bypass Albany's downtown station completely. Purple and blue would both come through our station.
Yeah. Well, thank, and thank you for being a part of that stakeholders group, too. So, thank you for attending.
Oh, yeah. You're welcome.
Yeah. I think we only had three from Albany that, attended that day.
Yeah. There wasn't very many people from Albany.
Yeah.
There was seven people from Corvallis and three from Albany, so...
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Bill.
Can I come and read the motion back?
Yes, uh-huh.
The motion is to direct the mayor to express the council's desire to keep Albany in the forefront of the high...
Okay. Is that it? All right. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I'm opposing all the specific...
Okay. All right.
Mentioned the blue line.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Motion carried. All right. And I will bring your concern forward next week. Okay, that's it that I have. Did you have anything?
Just real briefly, the League of Oregon Cities put out a report, and I'm not sure that the council received copies of it. It's entitled, "Where Does My Money Go," or "Where Do My Taxes Go?" You can find it on the League of Oregon Cities website at orcities.org. Albany is one of, I believe, seven or eight cities that are used as a case study. I think we were selected because the availability of the data, they could get most of it online. And essentially, what it's trying to show is that property taxes are not covering even the cost of basic services. For example, in Albany's case, the cost of police, fire, and ambulance services is something like 106 percent of property tax revenue. And that this is, that essentially showing that the property taxes are not keeping pace with the cost of delivering emergency services. And they showed it for, the sample cities that they used were Albany, Grants Pass, the Dows, Gresham, except Bend. And so, just in case that you, if you get questions about, that study was reported in the Oregonian. If you get questions about it, again, the report is available at the league site. And if I can answer questions about it, I'm happy to do that, too.
All right.
Yeah, I'm wondering about houses that are foreclosed. Are they taxed according to their reason when they were occupied? Or do banks get some kind of special dispensation and get their economy at a lower value?
Well, and one of the things that we theorized, I don't, we haven't really done much research into it, but we have good reason to believe it's true, is actually tax collections have improved in the last few years. The rate, we used to get 93 to 95 percent of the property taxes that we love, and we're now up to like 96 percent.
I'm not worried whether the banks pay or not. I'm just wondering if they get some kind of a cut, because the place isn't occupied, and they're not making any effort to sell them.
Well, the only difference would be if the condition of the property affected its assessed value in the eyes of the assessor. And I think that's unlikely.
Well, some of them are going downhill, as they say, year after year, unoccupied. Apparently not available.
Well, again, it would have to be the...
Concerned about their not being available, essentially.
Yeah. And in some cases, and, you know, I've talked many times about the house next door. Apparently, somebody bought it.
Well, good.
There's not, it's not occupied. They haven't done anything with it. But there's some evidence that it has been purchased, even though there was never a for-sale sign on it, and I never saw any indication of who was selling it or how. But...
Things are starting to move.
Yeah. No, I don't think so.
Maybe someone saw it on TV.
Could be. I'll keep, I'll keep hyping it here.
Hey, did you have anything else?
No.
All right. Staff? Mark, Marilyn? None? Okay. And then council, you want to note that our work session is November 4th, and regular session November 6th, because that's changed from the upcoming holidays. So...
Figure session was what?
November 6th. So, November 4th is our next work session, and 6th, because we will not have a council meeting during the holiday week. Okay. With that, we adjourn.